Hi, good evening. Welcome to the April 15th regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm still getting used to taking the role for the council. Councilmember Harof.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Chu.
Here. Right, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) the United States of America and to recover from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Would anyone like to have an item pulled for discussion or I can entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next is our city manager's oral report from city manager Dan Swartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items to keep you up to date on. One is, last time we met, I told you that the pedestrian bridge behind Bonner was arriving to be installed. It's in, you probably noticed it's not open. That's because the railings are separate from the bridge. You may recall, we ordered the bridge as a prefabricated item that you just sort of drop in place. The railings are actually a separate component, they hadn't come in yet. They arrived today, I believe, or this week, and they'll be installed this week or next, and then the bridge will be open two weeks. So, Mary Grace, two days, two days, two days, she wants me to make sure I'm accurate. Two days and it'll be open. So, they are working to get that done, and that's why there was a slight delay in dealing with that. But, we will do a ceremony to recognize the bridge, and again, really appreciative to Greenbrier Property Management and the Schultz family for their contribution to make that bridge happen. I wanted to segue from that to say, as you know, our Public Works Department has been working hard in the last year to promote amount out in the community, opportunities for folks to get involved, and ways that neighborhoods and different property owners can get involved in projects in their area. And I'm excited to tell you that the folks in the Heatherwood neighborhood have really coalesced around doing some work in their park, and they're working with our department very closely to raise a substantial amount of money to help complement the money coming in from Measure A, and really rehab their park, put in safe place, a new safe place structure, and some other amenities that they'd like to have, so that they can actually hold some of their neighborhood gatherings in the park. So, it's very exciting, and I expect we're going to do more as we reach out to other neighborhoods. I think the Measure A money is actually a wonderful driver, as you know, that's the park sales tax money around the county, and what, and we've sort of laid out working on a few parks each year. It's a wonderful way for us to go into a neighborhood, we have something positive to talk about with folks, and we can kind of say, you know, this is what we can do with what's coming in, and if you can help us, we can make it even better. And, I think that's really exciting, and it's a great way to get folks involved with a community build type project, so we'll be doing some of that. We are also looking at some issues in Piper Park, ones, something you've already approved and authorized to move forward with, that's the Dog Park being relocated along near the Central Marin Police Authority Building. The RFP for that project will be going out in the next few weeks, so that it can be awarded in the early summer. There'll be some final design work, so we'll do some community engagement in the summer, particularly with the stakeholders, to do some final design elements, and then the hope is to do the construction in the fall. We are looking hard at the playground right now in Piper Park, it's really showing its age, and we do have some concerns with a few of the structures. So, we're, we've talked to you about this before, we're right now trying to figure out which pots of money we have that are restricted to different uses or available, and could be directed toward the park, and could be specifically directed toward the playground, but we'll be having some discussions with stakeholders soon about options in the park. Folks should pay attention to the agendas for the Park and Recreation Commission, because that'll be our forum where we have a lot of these discussions. They've already had a few discussions about options and opportunities out there. And Parks and Rec's really busy, as you know, they worked with Public Works and with the Recreation Department to arrange for a place structure out at Neighborhood Park on Larkspur Landing. That got delayed shortly, because Serenity at Larkspur Landing, the apartment complex that had, whose owners had stepped forward and said, "We'll pay for the place structure", they sold the property. The new owners are really excited about the commitment, and are still committed to making it happen. We had to wait for the sale to go through, to finish that out. So, they're working now with the Public Works Department to plan a schedule for the installation of the equipment. It's all been selected, just needs to be purchased and installed, so we'll have a timetable for that soon, but I know that Public Works wants to make sure that happens during the summer, if possible, so that's their goal. And we were really pleased that the new owners stepped up and said, "This is a great idea, we're thrilled, we're going to take care of this." So, that's been great. Lot of busy activity going on around the community still from Ross Valley Sanitary District. I know those of you who live on Magnolia are enjoying that on a regular basis. We have a few employees who give me their updates at 6:00 in the morning of what they're observing out there. But, hopefully, you know, things will start to calm down a bit, although, just as some of that work starts to subside, our work on Bonner Bridge will start to really ratchet up, so. It'll probably be folks who use that stretch of Magnolia around Bonner, you're gonna enjoy that construction zone feel for quite a while, but we'll try to make it as pleasant as we can. And you may get asked, or folks, I don't know, a handful of people that are paying attention on TV right now, you may have noticed PG&E crews are actually out on Dougherty right now, they've been out a lot longer than anticipated. They had, they're doing gas lane, gas main work out there, and it's a little more complex than they'd expected, so they needed to extend their hours, and because it's, gas main works considered emergency work, they're allowed to go past our normal construction hours, so that's why they're out there still now, and maybe out there in the evening tonight, and even tomorrow, to get some of that work done. Nothing to be concerned about, it's just, they need to make sure they get that job done and do it correctly. If there's other projects around town, or other things you want to ask me about, Mr. Mayor, please, go ahead.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the city manager? I'll start with Councilmember Hilmer, then Vice Mayor Way.
Just a question about the Ross Valley Sanitary District work that's ongoing, and maybe our Public Works Director might be the person to answer. Gelati Brothers had equipment staged in the Creekside neighborhood shortly after their work seemed to have been completed. I got a few phone calls from residents there wanting to know when, and maybe it's already gone, but when they're, when the construction equipment might be removed from the neighborhood streets.
So, my understanding is they are in the process of removing it. I don't know if it's all 100% removed, but it's in the process of being removed. It's, I have spoken with a couple people through there, and the work along Larkspur Plaza Drive is, has been restored to its temporary condition, we will, this is one of those roads that we did a partnership with the Sewer District, they're giving us dollars so that we will have that in our 1516 project to repave that whole street. But, they are just completing to get that safe, and that equipment is moving out, so it should be out within the week.
Good news, thank you.
It's also along the bike path, too.
Right, yeah, they actually did a pretty good job, they repaved a whole section of the bike path, and we just inspected it a few days ago. Good.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Way.
About returning to the Heatherwood Park, and I don't have the mini-parks plan with me, but the stairs that connect Heatherwood Park up to Meadow Wood, are those part of the renovation plans under the mini-park plan, or is that something that this joint community type of funding can look at, too?
Let Mary Grace answer.
So, those are public stairs.
Right, the concrete ones.
Yes, and they are identified in our, in our stairs and what have you plan. The mini-parks action plan has identified all the various improvements that either have come up through projects that were recommended, or health and safety issues, or just the projects, we just need to bring things up to code. The effort that Heatherwood Neighborhood is doing is to augment and basically accelerate some of those improvements.
Okay.
So, we're working with them pretty closely. It's really exciting, I gotta tell you, they have just totally embraced it, they have a website, they're working with some of the, like the Rotary and what have you, they're reaching out there, and it's just really a cool thing to see happening. So, we will be having a community project there in June, where they're actually going to donate some of their time, and assist us with removing the sand, so we can get safe fall zone material into the area and what have you, and that helps stretch the dollars, helps make the dollars go farther, because we're not paying for the labor to remove the sand, so it's a neat thing.
Councilmember Morrison.
I do, I rode my bicycle on the new bike path, it's fabulous, it's really lovely, it's really nice to look at, too. My question would be, well, the Ross Valley Sanitary is in front of Hillview, so I encounter them most mornings so far, they've been very polite, they've organized the traffic well, so that was nice to see. The question I'm getting is, you know the plants that you pulled up on the fence on Magnolia, in front of Hillview, are we going to replant? What are we going to do with all that vegetation?
The Hillview-Greenway is, that area is part of one of the mitigation projects for Bonner Bridge. So, we are working with the Sewer District on this project as well, where the portion that they're going to be contributing dollars in, that would be helping us with what our city match would be for our federal funding, that will come in, and that whole area is going to be re-landscaped, the path reconstructed, and it's going to be native plantings that will allow for the filtration of storm water. So, we are out with the RFQ right now for the consultant selection for all of the mitigation projects, that includes the Dog Park, the wetlands restoration, the work along the Magnolia from Dougherty all the way to Dartmouth, including the Greenway, and the two docks. So, we will have the consultants selected here within the next few weeks, and we'll be starting public outreach on several of these in the summer. So, be looking forward to some meetings to get public input on what the ideas to look at, and we'll have a landscape architect to help us there, and all these fun things.
Great.
We'll have a lot going on.
Okay, one more kudo. Mary Grace met with a neighbor of ours in Hillview, and they really appreciate what you said, and your time, and your listening skills, and what you shared with them, so thanks for taking the time out to do that, it meant a lot to them.
Thank you.
And where they're spreading the words to other neighbors now, how wonderful, and how much they trust the public work.
I've been asking for everybody's patience quite a bit over the next few years here, this summer, we're going to be getting hot and heavy with construction on Bonner Bridge, and one of the upcoming council meetings, I'll bring you an update on that.
This city's going to be beautiful in 10 years from now.
Let's hope it's a little faster than that.
Thank you. I have more to say, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
Dan, I don't know who's doing it, but at the neighborhood, there's a neighborhood getting together, they're going to clean the Cordera Creek this weekend, Saturday from 11:30 to 3:00. That's kind of cool, too, I read that in the IJ. The Dog Park, I've been asked, are we going to put bark or grass, or what are we going to put within the fence of the Dog Park? Do we know yet?
This is the new Dog Park?
Yes.
It'll be grass.
It'll be grass, that's what they want it to be here. And then Piper Park, are you going to work on the tennis courts at all?
We don't have identified to do maintenance on the tennis courts right now, I, that is something that's on my radar, I do a check-in with REC every season, and we reach out to the tennis pro who uses that a lot.
Moses and Leo.
Yeah, and get their kind of updating.
It's pretty slanted.
Yeah, we don't, but we don't have anything identified right now.
Okay, great, I'll let them know that, thank you.
Councilmember Harof, do you have any questions for staff?
Not tied.
Okay, all right, we will move on to the next item, which is our council member reports and comments. Would you like to start, Kevin?
Actually, the only item that I was going to report on, I think Catherine would like to report, so I'll let you go ahead, and I'll add on if I need to.
Yeah, we went together, so. Last Thursday, Councilmember Harof and I, as the Larkspur ABAG delegate and alternate, attended a meeting that was called by Pat Eklund, who is the mayor pro temp of Novato, who is the MCC MC, I always get those abbreviations wrong, person for all of us, who's our representative to ABAG, and we've been working with this committee of representatives from each town for about four or five different meetings, over the course of the last six months, to come up with a list of principles for Plan Bay Area for the update for 2017, of what worked and what didn't work by the perspective of Marin and Marin delegates. So, this meeting was called actually by citizens of Marin, and there were about five representatives from various towns there, Kevin and I were there together, and a representative from the administration of ABAG. So, I thought it was a very comprehensive discussion, it lasted a couple of hours, they have, the key milestone update was discussed, and various other things were discussed, I won't, I'll have this available if someone likes to see it, but it is online for them. But, one thing that I think I'd like people to know is that the Plan Bay Area Update Workshop for Marin is ten, is scheduled for May 16th, which is a Saturday. Part of the next 15 months, ABAG is holding public workshops within each of the nine counties, between in May and June of this year, and March and April of next year, so the one in Marin is on Saturday, the 16th. I don't know the location yet, I think that's to be announced. I plan to be there, and it's open to the public, and the conversation is about what people in the community would like to see for the amendments to Plan Bay Area for 2017. Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I'll just add, just very briefly, and that's a good, that was a good summary of what happened at the meeting. The reason that I was there was because of a effort that this Marin Delegates Group has initiated, with a little working group that includes myself, Elizabeth Breakus, is that how you pronounce her name?
Ross.
I'm from Mayor of Ross, Pat Eklund, and Damon Conley. The purpose of the work group getting organized is to provide ABAG with some input on how this public meeting that is tentatively set for May 16th will be organized. One of the things that has been a source of concern and discussion within the delegates group, has been the need to ensure that the public input process that ABAG goes through as it tees up its next iteration of Plan Bay Area, is more responsive to the public, and creates more of an opportunities for not only public input, but for responsiveness on the part of ABAG in terms of what it hears, and what it reports back to the public that it has heard, and giving the public an opportunity to weigh in on that, and make sure that they're getting it right. So, we'll be working on that process, obviously, it's a short time fuse, because they do want to go ahead with, I don't know what they're really calling it, they were calling it an open house, I think, before, on, for May 16th, seems a little misleading to me, but whatever it is that they are going to call it, we're going to try to influence how they structure it, to make sure that it is viewed by the public as a meaningful opportunity for input. So, we'll be doing that, and that's part of the process that you were just describing with the meeting.
I think just one more follow-up for that, it's, one more follow-up on that, is that this organize, this group of representatives from all of our cities and towns, that Pat has helped organize, has been a real model for the rest of the nine counties, and apparently they, we've been the most organized and articulate group, who've written down and really talked about what has worked and not worked from our perspectives as Marin representatives, and they, and I really feel is that the administration at ABAG has listened to that in many different ways, mainly because we have a resident here in Greenbrier, who's a deputy executive director of it, who attends all these meetings, but they are now modeling that type of outreach within the other nine counties, and I think we should be very pleased that we're getting some traction about how us as local representatives can say, and try to have an impact on, on the long-range planning. So, that's my full report.
Anything else you'd like to report?
No, that was it.
No? Okay, any reports down on this side?
I do, I have one.
Okay, good.
I, along with Kevin Harof and our city manager, we sit on the Larkspur-Cordera Traffic Committee, and I also am a representative for the Safe Routes to School, so I met with the Redwood Eco Action Club, and they are involved with the Safe Routes to School, adorable 15 group of young students, and they did a 2014 survey, a travel survey, and they shared with me that 60% of all trips in the morning to Redwood are made in single-family vehicles, no carpooling. They said also, 16% of the students carpool, and when you do carpool, you get a parking space, so there's only four parking spaces reserved, which is really a sad percentage, and then only 8% bike. So, we talked about how we can promote carpooling, so I'm going to work with them, and Kevin, if you'd like to join me, it's, we're going to go ahead, and we're going to try to change the student directory to identify other students who live in the same neighborhood, so it'd be convenient for them to make that phone call, and say, "Let's carpool together to get that reserved space." And we're also, they want to create an incentive program to award students with maybe free gas cards, and we're trying to be other, be creative with that. They also want to start promoting bicycles, we discussed about, they're going to have a National Bike to School Day, which is May the 6th, and I believe Tasman is quite involved in this, too, your wife. And they're also going to host a week-long spring contest with various raffles, if you ride your bike, and they're going to do more education through the Redwood High School broadcast and other type of media, so they're really going to start working this year and next to try to get cars off the road. So, it's exciting to hear that the students want to be as involved, and they are concerned as we are.
I'm thrilled to be a part of that, I've got a kid who's in 7th grade, and will be going to Redwood in a year, and figuring out how I'm going to get her there is a high priority for me.
Good, it's a good start, and a good group who are well motivated. Thank you.
Good.
I've got a report.
Sure, go ahead.
Unless Dan has one.
Can't believe I forgot this report. April 8th, I attended the Larkspur Library and Community Center Advisory Committee, myself and Congress, Congresswoman, look at that, I just promoted you, council, council member, yeah, Nancy Pelosi is retiring. Our, the representatives, council representatives on the advisory working committee for the new Larkspur Library and Community Center. So, I just want, for anybody who's listening out online, to note, to note that the next public meeting is April 30th, I believe 6:00 o'clock, or is it 6:30? But, keep your, if you want to attend, keep your, look out for the exact time, because I'm not sure if it's 6:00 or 6:30, but that will be a public meeting, and all of the boards and commissions and the council members will all be there, so it's a very important meeting to attend if you're interested in the Larkspur Library and Community Center design process.
Okay, I've got a few quick items. Council received a email from a resident of Baltimore Park about traffic safety issues, and that hasn't been the first time it's come to the attention of the city in recent months, so Central Marin Police will be hosting a community session where they will talk about traffic safety and other community-related concerns that the Baltimore Park neighborhood may want to talk about, and that will be on April 27th at 6:30 at the police station. We've already gotten notices out to all the residents in the neighborhood, so they've been made aware of that. Second item, kind of a fun item, we had 15 students from Colorado University come to visit Larkspur. Unfortunately, Councilmember Morrison was away, so she asked me to host them, and they came here to do a Bay Area tour of different cities, and since one of the students was from Cordera and a former Redwood student, they also picked Larkspur, but their area of study was to look at different cities in the San Francisco Bay Area to talk about the effects, and possibly have discussion about solutions related to gentrification. So, I thought they had a really interesting discussion, we hosted them down at the police station, they went and toured the Rose Garden development, and seemed like they had a good time while they were out here. One of the things I had to do for myself recently was to recertify as a community emergency response team participant, so every four years you need to do that. It was hosted by Sandra Fell, Mayor Gary Phillips and Sandra Fell was also a participant in the same class, and our Captain Tom Timmer from Fire Department was one of the instructors. They all asked me to encourage the rest of the council to take that as well, being that Mill Valley has had all their council members go through that training, so they've set the bar high.
Okay, I'll find out the next time.
I commit to doing it, absolutely.
Great, all right, that's all we have for council member reports for tonight, so this is the time for public comment, if any member of the audience would like to address the council on a matter that is not on our agenda tonight, but within our jurisdiction, feel free to step up to the microphone. Okay, we don't have anybody here tonight for public comment. Lieutenant Norton, if you'd like to stay around and listen to our other business items, you're welcome to, but I don't think you need to, if you have other duties you'd like to attend to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we have two business items tonight, being that we have Barbara Thornton, the executive officer of the Marin Telecommunications here with us, I'm going to flip around the two items, so that we can discuss that item first, so we can get her home, since she is on her own time at this point. So, I will turn this over to city manager Dan Swartz to initiate this business item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll note upfront, I'll probably be deferring to the mayor quite a bit, we've collaborated on the report you're receiving this evening, as Mayor Chu is your representative to the MTA, and has been directly participating in discussions that were, we had hoped to result in our staying with MTA, but as you've seen in the written report, and as I'll comment on shortly, we're both recommending that we proceed with the process to leave the MTA. The MTA, or the Marin Telecommunications Agency, is a joint powers authority here in Marin that Larkspur joined at its inception, and its primary purpose at the time of formation was to capture economies of scale by having multiple jurisdictions in Marin work together to negotiate a franchise agreement for cable communication. At the time that was done, the entity they were negotiating with was Comcast, which is still the big player in our region. But, over time, and for a variety of reasons that we've discussed at many other meetings, MTA's board decided to move to the state franchise agreement system, and I won't spend time this evening reminding you about the history of why they created the statewide system, but now there is a statewide system in place and a methodology in place that essentially prescribes the franchise process and the outcome for all jurisdictions. So, this has greatly reduced the purpose of the MTA in terms of its core mission, but the empowering document for MTA covers a broad spectrum of options and powers and such. As we talked about with you a year ago, it, there were actions that occurred at MTA that established that the MTA board was comfortable deciding mid-year that they might not send all the revenues that were entitled, that each member agency was entitled to, in terms of franchise agreement money, to the member agencies, but retain it for whatever uses the board deemed it should use them for. They came up with a voting methodology that they felt was fair, and I'm not disputing whether it was fair or not, but it is a methodology that effectively can result in several member agencies objecting to the use of the funds, objecting to the use of their general funds for that board's purposes, and not, and being overruled in those general fund monies, being retained by MTA and not sent to the member agencies. That was problematic for us, and it's something that actually, and we put in your packet, Larkspur was concerned about this possible behavior on the part of MTA as early as 2006, and it came to fruition in the last couple of years that they, they were using the monies in that way. We're not belaboring the policy decisions involved, this is more about the principle of what's happening with money that is essentially generated by an agreement whose purpose is to reimburse the city of Larkspur and the residents of Larkspur for the impacts caused by the use of our right-of-way by this franchise, by the, by Comcast, by the delivery of the service. Comcast, by the delivery of the service. So according to MTA's governing document, we have to give notice one year in advance that we're going to leave the agency. We did that a year ago. But during that year, we've made efforts to come up with a path where we would terminate our withdrawal and we would stay with the agency. And we've laid out different options that we thought were acceptable based on the policy direction the council had given us. I think this is where I'd like to transition to Mayor Chu, because Mayor Chu's been the one actively negotiating, so to speak, on the part of the city to see if one of those options was acceptable to the MTA board. And at its most recent meeting, Mayor Chu informed me after that meeting, he did not think that any of those four options were going to come to fruition. So I'm going to pass it to Mayor Chu and let him take the baton from here.
Okay. What I've provided you tonight is about five slides, which will also appear for members of the public. The first one is just a quick chronology of, you know, the process from the time that we voted to withdraw under ordinance 994. And I'm also a member of the Finance and Policy Committee for the MTA, so I was able to sit in those meetings and, you know, direct, have direct conversation with the other four members that represent the County of Marin, City of San Rafael, Town of Tiburon, and who's the last one, Barbara? I can't remember. Anyway, they don't represent their specific towns, except for San Rafael and the County of Marin, because they have the largest proportion of, you know, the MTA subscribers. And then the other three of us are at-large members. And, you know, over the course, the discussion really started in January, and if you go to the second slide, the options that were presented to the Finance and Policy Committee are Options 1 and 3. That's what Larkspur came in with as their initial position. It was that one of the choices was to have a unanimous vote of, you know, the members for any franchise fee expenditure that goes beyond the operating expenses for the MTA. You know, that was an alternative. It was also something that even I considered probably very onerous, you know, because it allows for one member to dictate what the majority would have to adhere to, so you end up with, you know, kind of a lowest common denominator. Item 3 was probably the one that was more practical, and what we had suggested was to have two classes of membership, so you could have full-voting membership and, you know, whatever the, you know, those members decided on, you know, use of franchise fees, they would do so, and the non-voting members would only pay for the portion that was related to operations, you know, operating and maintaining the franchise, the Comcast and AT&amp;T franchise. During this whole conversation in the first Finance and Policy Committee meeting, it was suggested by the Representative San Rafael that there'd be an opt-out program. So you could kind of pick and choose à la carte based upon whether that was something that a member wanted to participate in or not, and that's similar to the way the original Marin Clean Energy was created. Through that discussion, you know, the committee came up with two other options. One was to have a higher threshold of funding for the projects. Right now, it's based on a majority vote, but in the way that the CMCM funding was, you know, determined, they used a 75% threshold instead of just a pure majority. That didn't have any discussion, but what ended up being the preferred option was that in order to determine if something was within the scope and mission of the MTA, then it was the strategic plan that needed to be revisited and clarified so that any future decision would then be deemed as being consistent with, you know, the mission and the strategic plan of the MTA. Okay? On the next slide, you'll see, you know, I'm not going to go through each of these, but it's more for your reference. The current strategic plan that was created in March of 2008 has these five elements to it. You know, I'm not going to say that some of these things work now or they don't work now. You know, I can mention, for example, that the first item, you know, we actually do that. We look at telecommunications policies. The question is, you know, that's always come up for us, is do other agencies or JPAs or even, say, the County of Marin that has a large portion of telecommunications projects and matters, you know, do they recognize that authority? And, you know, we've been told from time to time that they don't. But it's still a good discussion, you know, for us to have. I think probably the biggest item that is of contention, which is how we got here, was that the second item is that the MTA continues to help develop, expand, and support, you know, public access, education, and government. And, you know, that in and of itself is probably what steered the majority of the board towards this funding, because they were grappling with whether they were providing the support that they needed for the CMCM when they didn't have enough money to be able to get to the point where they became self-sufficient. And, you know, the original agreement, you know, was that CMCM would be self-sufficient. So, you know, the vote came down to whether we were going to be using, you know, the members' franchise fees to help subsidize it for, you know, the next two and a half to three years. Okay? The, if we do go through a new strategic plan process, what they plan, what the MTA plans on doing is to have the Finance and Policy Committee meet with CBG Communications to set up that process, and they're the organization that helped us through the strategic plan process back in 2008. And the board will then begin their strategic planning process at their June meeting on June 10th. And then at this time, I'd like to have our executive officer, Barbara Thornton, come up and try and guide us through the details in terms of how she envisions the process will be from then until the end of the year. Welcome, Barbara.
What is your title again?
Executive Officer.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and Speaker. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to, Larry asked me to talk a little bit about the strategic plan, and he kind of went through the process that our Finance and Policy Committee went through, which is more or less an executive committee for the MTA. And I did want to share that the Finance and Policy Committee, from the very beginning in their discussion, said that they really did want Larkspur to remain a member of MTA because they felt that, you know, we were cohesive as an agency in a lot of the items that we worked on, and they felt that they wanted to continue to have Larkspur. So the Finance and Policy Committee met three months in a row to discuss this. And some of the things that Larry went through, some of the different voting and those types of things, the discussion in the first couple of meetings kept getting back to, well, what is the operations budget? What is included or not included? And it kept getting back to, well, what is our mission? What is our strategic plan? And that's one of the reasons that the Finance and Policy and ultimately the board decided the first step at the minimum is to go back and revisit our strategic plan and update that, because since 2008, and actually, work had been done on the strategic plan in 2007, there's been a lot of things that have changed with regards to video services, cable TV, telecommunications. And when we did this, we were a fairly new agency, and at that point had only focused on the renewal of a cable franchise. So the Finance and Policy and ultimately the board felt that this would be a really good step for us to take, because it would clarify many things, both for us to go forward as well as with regards to budget. So the vision for the strategic plan is the Finance and Policy Committee will be meeting with CBG Communications in May. And the purpose of that is, one, to identify what is the pre-meeting materials that we want to send out to the board for them to review so that they can have some education and kind of come together as far as the topics that we'll be covering. Secondly is that the Finance and Policy and CBG Communications would work on the design of the workshop for the first discussion of the update of the strategic plan, so that we can make the most effective use of everybody's time and also with the time that's spent on updating the strategic plan. So we felt that in the June timeframe, MTA meets every other month regularly, although we can call meetings in between that. So our next regular meeting would be June, and we were going to have a workshop at that meeting, whether it's two evenings or one long evening where we start early, whatever, where we would review the current strategic plan, the information changes that have, you know, happened since our initial strategic plan, and then go into discussions around what our strategic plan should include or what things should be updated. And our strategic plan had the mission. It had five strategic goals. The first three were focused on in the immediate term, and there were two others that we said, you know, we have very limited funding, and so we have to really have our funding match with whatever we say we're going to be able to do. And so the digital inclusion and the gathering of information and dissemination of it were kind of put on things that we would do in the 2010 timeframe and later, after the Media Center got started. So that, in June, the MTA would review and do the workshop around the strategic plan. In the July timeframe, we would work with the CBG Communications to actually write up the draft of the revised and updated strategic plan. And then July, August timeframe, then be reviewing that revised draft, and that would be done with the Finance and Policy Committee and could even be done with the MTA board, because they have a meeting in August. Or we could, if it's not ready in August, or if, you know, a lot of people are on vacation on the board, then we may make it September for that meeting, because it's important for the board to be there for that. And we have 11 members on our board, so. Anyway, so that would be the review by the MTA board in the August-September timeframe, and then approval of that updated strategic plan in the October timeframe in their regular meeting. Now, the Finance and Policy Committee as the board felt that this was an aggressive timeframe to do this work, but they felt that they wanted it to be, and it was what we wanted to try to achieve. They also acknowledged that depending on how much discussion the board wanted to have around the strategic plan, the approval may go out into the latter part of this year, in which case we have a meeting, regular meeting in December, but also could have one in November. So, you know, that they wanted it, the longest time for it to take is the end of the year, but they're really targeting for October if possible. But one of the things is for all of the agencies and the board members, you know, to really have the discussion and buy into what ultimately becomes the strategic plan. So that's the timeframe, and I'll answer any questions on that. And as I said, our last strategic plan took six months from the first workshop until it was approved. However, we had had one workshop a few months before that, six months, to sort of bring the board up to date on a lot of the terminology, the technology, what is the cable TV industry, what are telecommunications and those types of things, because our board members say when they first get on our board, it's a lot that they haven't been introduced to before, so we, you know, try to bring them up to speed. And I do meet with each of our new board members and spend an hour or two with them to go through the MTA items. And so I'll close with that.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask Barbara either about the strategic plan process or any part of the MTA's discussions on this? Yes, yeah?
Barbara, thank you for all your work. Given that the rate-regulating authority has been moved to the state level for the franchise administration, and that was the original purpose of what was the Marin Cable Rate Regulating Franchising Authority before it became the MTA. And I appreciate the concept of MTA when it was founded. But the various efforts beyond the franchising, franchise administration to kind of become the chief coordinating and policymaking body has not really played out that way, given the other agencies that oversee emergency communications and the efforts to kind of rent out the rights-of-way for fiber in an organized manner to get broadband and wireless capabilities as a business plan have not worked out. You still have the contract, contractor relationship with the Media Center, so you're overseeing that. What is the mission of MTA in addition to what I've described?
There's several things that the MTA is working on. One is the administration of the franchise. Even though it's at the state level, the state has really no authority, like, over customer service issues. They put that back on the local entity. Dealing with the cable TV company on the franchise fees, ensuring that we get those franchise fees, the right amount of those franchise fees, we work on that. In fact, MTA has just initiated this year a franchise revenue audit of AT&amp;T and Comcast, and we're going to be getting additional revenue back from AT&amp;T for both the franchise fees and the PEG fees. Then there is, as you said, with the oversight of the Media Center, there's a fair amount of that as they've been getting started. You know, they kind of went through the first three to four years was their startup phase. Now, I think they're in a mode of being, kind of, the engines are fully running. You know, they, initially, it was a lot of public access and some government. They're now doing public access, a lot of government, and also doing a lot of work on the education side with schools and young youth. So we kind of oversee, we receive the PEG fees from the cable TV providers, and then in our recent dedicated access provider agreement, you know, we set, established what of those PEG fees, which at this point is 100%, they would get. And then there were some additional fees from the franchise or MTA's budget for a short period of time. So there's that, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask just a question? The Media Center, or CMCM, is that?
Yes, CMCM.
Has a board of directors?
Yes.
And the board and the Media Center are in, are acting as an independent contractor in relationship to the MTA board?
Yes.
So the Media Center has its own board, and it has this contractor relationship. So what is it, what oversight does MTA provide, other than managing the contract?
Well, one of the things is, as I said, early on, they did not put much effort into the government aspects of it. And so one of the things that the MTA did was ensure that some of the PEG fees would be made available to the various city councils, such as your own, to be able to get the video equipment installed so you could broadcast your meetings. And, you know, to work with the Media Center so that they would understand the importance of the government aspect. And in fact, now that most all of the cities are on it, or many of them, they said it's their most popular programming. Now, three years ago, they did not envision that that would be the case. So one of the things that we, you know, I've continued to work with them is to be sure, you know, that we get the representation of the government in the work that, and the shows that go on, the program channels. So, you know, that, I think that at this point, the Media Center... So, you know, that, I think that at this point, the Media Center, and since they're more in their ongoing operations phase, it will not take nearly as much of MTA's resource, my, me essentially, to help direct and manage and see that they're meeting the requirements across all three segments, public education and government and that type of thing. But to date, it has taken, you know, a fair amount of leadership in working with them to be able to get to where we are today. There's there's other things that the MTA does, like there has been a tremendous amount of legislation introduced both at the federal and the state level. There's been activities going on at the PUC with regards to DIFCA, which is the state franchising and the renewal process. What would that be for the state renewal, state franchise renewals? There's been a lot of, at the federal level and at the FCC, where there's been proceedings whereby the FCC has been trying to take away the local authority, local government authority to oversee the siting for wireless facilities. So we've been involved in providing input to that and getting information, you know, to our cities where appropriate. And, you know, there's another bill in the state legislature that has just come up. So I work at times with the California League of Cities on telecommunications and cable TV issues, both for us to provide input, but also to get the California League of Cities to take positions that would be favorable to the local cities. This was demonstrated in another bill that was introduced, I guess, two or three years ago by a legislator down in Southern California, which was going to require that all of the local entities video and broadcast their meetings. And there was no funding available for that, you know. So I was able, actually, I was one of the first ones that got involved in that and really helped lead the direction with that legislators to say, you know, you can't do this if there's not funding because there's many cities that, you know, this was when we were kind of going through the recession. I said, there's many cities that don't have the funding available to be able to do that. So those are some of the things that, you know, we've expanded out where we initially were early on in MTA. There's just been a tremendous amount of legislative regulatory, both at the PUC, the state and the federal, that we've been able to provide input to and particularly on the state, be able to help direct the direction of some of those bills that have been introduced.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any question they'd like to ask Barbara at this time? Okay, well, thank you. We may, we may call you, we may call you back.
Thank you.
Okay, so really what we're asking is to, for tonight, to provide staff with some direction. We have two paths that we can take. We can take no action at all because Ordinance 944, 994 basically says that we withdraw from the MTA effective 7/115. But if if we were to go forward with that process, oh, no, this would be the last slide now, Dan, words as actions.
No, I shouldn't be allowed to do such things.
Yeah, right, right now, the MTA does provide all its members with, you know, the various services that it provides in terms of managing the franchise and, you know, the things that Barbara mentioned. You know, it's almost like the MCCMC's Legislative Committee except on things that are related to telecommunications. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of research that, you know, she and her staffs does in that capacity and that that has, you know, a lot of value to us. You know, if we didn't have that information, then we would either have to find out about it or, you know, our staff would have to take care of that. Part of the managing of the franchise also deals with taking customer complaints and things like that. So right now, it all goes through the MTA. Those are some of the examples. Barbara, if you'd like to add to that, you know, I know that there are other things that you do do as well, but that, those are the general things that, you know, we as a city would have to start to do. Now, we would either have to figure out a way to do that ourself or we can start a conversation between our city manager and and our, and the MTA, you know, through Barbara in terms of whether they would want to do that as a fee for service.
Can I ask a question about that?
This is probably to you, Dan, is on the attachment H2, which is the chart in the report, it looks like that the franchise fees come from Comcast, AT&amp;T, and Horizon kind of combined. So if, if, looking at this, if we withdraw, that would then fall to the city, I assume, to get those franchise fees reimbursed to us. How do you see that that structurally will work within your, within your department?
Oh, yeah.
And do we have the capacity to do that right now?
To get the payments, sure.
Okay, without hiring anybody new?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, one of the points up there is exactly what you just pointed out is that we would need to have a mechanism or agreement with the MTA to get the franchise fees back to us because it's currently under DIFCA that it all gets paid to the MTA and then distributed to the members. We would have to create our own agreement with a direct access provider, presumably it'd still be the CMCM. And, you know, if it turns out that we go through with the no action and we actually withdraw in 7/1 and we decide that, you know, the strategic plan after they go through that process is something amenable to us, we can rejoin. Now, on the other side of it, if we were to amend Ordinance 994, what that would do is that we would have to state some date where we extend the date of withdrawal because right now it says 7/115 and, you know, the projected estimate is that the strategic planning process would go through until the end of this year so that we would extend that date to 1/116. If we were to do that, then we would just have this discussion again at that point where we would either revisit a withdrawal or that if they needed more time to complete the strategic plan, that we would have to have another amendment of Ordinance 994. So I, I think one of the things that would be good for, you know, Dan to provide for the Council is a follow-up on Vice Mayor Way's question about, okay, how would we go about doing the things that the MTA does for us now?
Well, most cities don't have a JPA to deal with franchise agreements, so they just deal directly with the franchise vendors. Our finance staff actually has experience elsewhere from their previous employment working on that sort of thing. So that's not something they're concerned about in terms of collecting the monies. One of the questions we'll have to look into by talking with MTA staff is actually what the volumes of customer service calls that actually reach MTA that are from Larkspur are, so we can determine how we would handle that and whether we'd want to speak to MTA about contracting back on a as-needed basis for that sort of service. You know, I think it's a policy question for the Council, how much of the the sort of extracurricular activities that MTA gets into you want your staff to work on? You know, we rely on the League of Cities to do our, a lot of our legislative advocacy now, and I engage them quite a bit. Councilmember Hillmer sits on a legislative committee which takes up a lot of the same issues that MTA is discussing at that level. So I think you'd still get representation on these issues. You can actually look to Nevada as your example here. Nevada's not part of MTA, they never have been part of MTA. They actually now contract with CMCM for services, including recording their meetings. So it's, we have a demonstration here in Marin that it's quite possible to participate in this landscape outside of the JPA. I think the two questions for the Council are your interest in participating in the, in this potential direction that is being alluded to of a new strategic plan and what that would look like and what the entity would do, and your comfort level with the fact that there aren't any indications from the MTA Board that they have any desire or intention to make changes to the way they manage our money. And they're the only JPA we belong to that holds all our money and then decides what they get to send back to us. That's a really unusual relationship. It's frankly the only regional agency I've ever belonged to that has that kind of power that I've represented a, my employer with, I should say. It's extraordinary level of power because usually what happens with a JPA is we send a check saying we're thrilled to be a member, here's our membership check for the year, here's what our share of your costs are. And then every once in a while, a JPA we belong to reaches out to the member agencies and says, we have a mid-year reason to look at augmenting our budget. Would that be something the member agencies could do? This agency's established and been very clear that, well, your money comes to us and if we need more of it mid-year, we're just going to vote to keep more of it, sorry. And that's a really, frankly, for me, that's the fundamental issue. And I'm framing it strongly because I feel strongly about it, that, that I don't know that the City of Larkspur should belong to an agency that is exercising that level of authority, particularly when the, the reason we joined the agency no longer exists as a reason for that agency to serve us.
I think that's a key fundamental point because it was still kind of lost on a couple Board members at our last meeting last week, is that, you know, the whole idea of being in a JPA is that you're working and you've agreed to a specific mission. And if you go back to when the MTA was formed, it's, it's not the same thing. And it's been, it evolved a little bit in '08. I expect it to evolve some more, you know, when they go through this process. So it's not like we're not being a team player here, you know, and I want to make that fundamentally clear that it's, it's not the same thing. And this is something that we identified in 2006, which predates even this city manager. So it's not his personal preference.
If I may add one comment, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I want to hearken back to a year ago because we did emphasize that if this came to fruition and we leave the MTA, there's nothing that prohibits the City of Larkspur from making its own direct contributions to the Media Center, you know, Community Media Center in Marin, that they, CMCM can come have a conversation directly with you and you can make a decision as the fiduciary agent of the City of Larkspur about general fund money that that you control and whether or not it's appropriate to direct it to CMCM. And that's what was lost in the conversation as your staff, as we reported to you last year.
Yes, go ahead.
This is to Barbara. Barbara, how many volume, volume meaning complaints, is that correct, calls that you get from Larkspur? How many would you get? Do you know offhand? I don't know offhand for Larkspur.
Yeah, we're recording this, so when you get on the audio.
I don't know offhand for Larkspur. You know, we don't really track it per entity. We kind of look at the entire MTA as a whole. So I'm sorry, I don't have that. I could get it for you.
Okay. Is there an estimate to how many you get per year in general?
It's probably a couple hundred.
And what would the, just give me an example of a complaint, please.
They come to MTA from customers who have tried to deal with the cable TV providers. We also get calls around telephone and internet because they have no one to complain to on those things. But primarily, it's cable TV where the customers tried to deal with the cable TV provider has been unsuccessful. And we've escalated it within either AT&amp;T or Comcast and to get resolution for the customer.
Okay.
So usually, they come to us and they're just pulling their hair.
Frustrating, okay. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? So after you received the complaint, since MTA no longer manages the franchise, do you have to go in any way through the franchising authority to the provider or?
No, and that's what, you know, with the state franchise, the PUC has really no authority other than a ministerial approval of a new franchise. And the only way that the current state franchise will not be renewed is if there's, there's a case that's gone through the courts and it's been ruled and against the cable TV company and it's valid and it's, you know, can't be changed.
So what kind of authority or leverage does MTA have with the service provider to, to get them to perform? They're not the enforcer of customer service standards.
Right. You know, just through our own persistence and working, having a working relationship with the Comcast, AT&amp;T, and Horizon staff that we work with. There is a government affairs person who is to focus, you know, kind of on working with the government entities and work within either AT&amp;T or Comcast to get us a satisfaction for our customers.
And they're responsible to the franchising authority at the state level?
No.
No?
No. There is, I mean, that's the fallacy with the state franchise. There really is, there's no rate regulation anymore. The PUC has a ministerial approval process of a franchise agreement, which is about a three-page, you know, 20 lines per putting in what's their name, what area they're talking about, this kind of stuff, and who are the officers of their company. And they submit that and the PUC within 30 days, okay, says, okay, you can have the franchise for that area. The P, any, any issues that we have with the cable companies, we have no recourse through the PUC, you only have recourse through the courts.
Thank you.
So the state franchise is nothing like the franchises that we were able to negotiate before. And we just have to continue to try to work on a personal basis with the people at those companies.
So you're, you're picking up a complaint from a customer and when they, when they get too frustrated, rather than they continue to try to work with the service provider, they go to MTA and MTA?
Helps them.
Offers to help them.
Usually, they've gone through three to five different layers or calls with the service provider before they come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Just a, a comment and a question. No, actually, this is, this is, the comment and the question is actually for Larry and Dan as much as anything else. The, the most compelling thing that I've heard stated this evening as we've talked this issue is what our city manager described as a concern about the way the, which the fees are managed and the limitations on our ability to exert control over that. That's troubling and frankly, kind of undemocratic in my, in my mind. I understand there are services that are provided and that's, that's great, but that is a, that's, that's a troubling administrative consideration for me. And I guess the question then, and this is maybe more a question for you, Larry, if, if we did, for example, hold off on pulling out while the strategic plan process went forward, what in your mind would you like to see as an outcome of that strategic planning process that would make you feel more comfortable in staying in?
You know, I had to think about this for a couple of days after, because I didn't send any comments off to Dan Squartz until the Friday after our meeting last Wednesday. So I waited two days because I, I had a conversation with Barbara immediately after the meeting and I, I think there were a couple of things that I was concerned about. In this particular process, all we've done is push the decision-making down a level. It's down a level in a sense that if the strategic plan gets approved by a majority of the Board, then the rest of the members will have to accept that plan. Okay, so it, we're in the same situation, but I think one of the things that was, I was more concerned about is the feeling amongst at least one Board member who was there that night, but I think it's shared by others, is that there's still not clarity in the current strategic plan as it relates to the CMCM because she felt that our funding of the CMCM was in fact within the scope and mission of the MTA when in fact the Finance and Policy Committee had already acknowledged in their first meeting that it was not. And that includes Barbara and also the staff attorney. What I'm getting at though is, you know, the comment I made to Barbara that night was, well, that's "Well, that's how we got here to begin with," is that there are, you know, people who are proponents of wanting the cities to fund the CMCM. And that's a decision that we have to make individually. You know, and that's the comment that, you know, Dan made, you know, do we, we have to have that discussion amongst ourselves in terms of whether we want to and if we do, you know, to what degree and what the scope is. Because as a good example, this is not the first occurrence of this. The first one was really when the CMCM wanted the MTA to challenge Comcast.
Mayor, can I clarify a term? When you say fund the CMCM, do you mean subsidize beyond the PEG monies that automatically go to?
Correct, out of our franchise fees. So there was a situation where the PEG fees were put on people's bills 49 cents a month. And with the new statewide franchise, it became 1% on your video fees. And they, in order for the CMCM to be fully funded, in short, they needed that whole 1%. But there was no stipulation in changing the, that part as to whether Comcast would allow to double charge their customer, the old recuperation of the old franchise fees plus the new one. And the feeling was that Comcast said that they were not going to do it. And in behalf of the CMCM, the MTA challenged it legally. And they were prepared to spend, I don't know, what was it, a couple hundred thousand or something like that? We had budgeted some, I can't remember, but it was well in the six figures where we had said that the legal fees, you know, that we would go through this legal process.
Yeah, actually, on that, there was a lot of discussion as far as going forward with the legal process. The real authorization was only for our legal counsel to write a letter to Comcast.
Yeah, but the discussion was that it could have gotten to the point where we were going to go through a full, potentially a full litigation. You know, it was there, it was going down that track.
There wasn't the support from the board on that, yeah. So, I mean, it was discussed, but there was not support from the board on that. So, and I, you know, I'd just add for the council, for their understanding, with regards to the funding that's coming out right now for about two and a half years from the franchise fees to the media center, we understood, the board understood that that was something, that was a deviation from something they had done in the past. And so the board, each of the members took it back to their councils. And I don't know if all of you were on the council when we went through that process, but the media center, Michael Eisenmenger, the executive director there, and myself, but Michael did the presentation to each of the councils to make the case for some funding from the franchise fees to go to the media center. So, you know, the board knew, you know, that that was something that had not been done in the past, that there'd been discussion to not do it in the past. And so the board felt they could not make that decision without each of the members being able to go back and talk to their councils.
Yeah, and I guess that comes to what then is going to be my second concern is that I have gotten private comments about other, I wouldn't say councils, but at least their representatives, being philosophically aligned with us. Okay, but in the end, it comes down to the vote that they have to cast and we were out there by ourself. So that's why I don't feel really comfortable that I'm, although, you know, everybody would like us to stay in the MTA. I don't feel like our issue has been adequately addressed since, as I said, pushing everything down a level in terms of the same majority vote and then really not seeing the members step up and say, you know, we're not against this.
And you don't, you don't see the strategic planning process that's envisioned here as changing that? That's kind of what I'm reading between the lines.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe Barbara, maybe Dan. I'll leave it to you for information. The contractor relationship the media center has with the MTA, with their own board, was supposed to be a competitive, like bidder arrangement, where if it was found that the media center couldn't become self-sustaining, MTA's responsibility was to seek other contractors. So when was the, when did MTA decide not to do that, but let the media center lobby the individual councils for further funding when they couldn't make it on their own?
Yeah. In the negotiations for the DAP agreement, initially and through much of the negotiations, MTA was only going to give the PEG fees to the media center. The media center then got a consultant involved at the very last minute, we were just about to sign it, who asked for two point, I don't know, I think around $2 million in franchise fees. And so the negotiations at that point, you know, was that the negotiating team says, "We can't do that," you know, that's, and the board says, you know, "We don't want that." And then the media center kept putting the pressure on and then, you know, ended up going to each of the councils to state their case and try to get the votes.
So where's the media center board of directors in all of this? Because it seems to me the MTA was acting much like the media center board as opposed to the media center board acting as an independent contractor in relationship to MTA.
Yeah, and I would say that the MTA, in getting the CMCM launched and going through this period, was, it was a very difficult situation. I think that going forward, we probably learned out of that experience and definitely it needs to be a contractor, contractee type of relationship.
Isn't that what's the?
Yes, it is.
Or isn't that the rules that, aren't those the rules that are laid out in the bylaws? Because you haven't changed them.
No. Well, it's the DAP agreement.
Right. DAP agreement, correct, correct, correct.
Represents the negotiations and the agreement between the two entities. And there was a lot of discussion as far as, you know, if it was to go out to bid in the negotiating team, you know, and the equipment that was there and all of that. And I think, you know, at the juncture that we were at, we felt that the media center was beneficial to the community, both from the government, the education, and the public access aspect of it. And that when the CMCM was, is able to get the 1%, they will be fully self-sufficient. And so there was this discussion of just a bridge during this period of time.
Thank you.
And, you know, the initial, the MTA strategic plan currently, when it spoke to the media center, the item that said that we would support them, work with them or whatever, it was pretty clear that what that entailed was in the first couple, two to three years, was that it would involve negotiating the DAP agreement. It would involve MTA establishing policies relating to the media center and funding and those types of things. So it was pretty much administrative and policy-related as opposed to financial support for the media center. And that was pretty clear in the initial strategic plan. And I think that's one of the areas that the board wants to be even more clear in this current strategic plan.
Thank you.
I want to thank you very much, Mayor Chu, for a very diligent and detailed assessment of the chronology of events for this because as a new, relatively new council member, it helps me to understand the persistence that you've expressed in this process. And the letter in the packet that's dated 2006 is nine years ago. And nine years ago, you expressed a lot of concern about what the fiduciary responsibility we have as a council to the residents of Larkspur and expressed those opinions to MTA and consistently attended meetings and expressed them along the way. And I don't feel confident that the direction the MTA is going is going to be consistent with what our needs are right now. I'm getting in a sense from all of this history and as well as the city manager's report that we will probably not see very many outcomes in the strategic plan that will be to the liking of what the fiduciary responsibility Larkspur has is. I'm supportive of action number one, no action taken, which is that we consistent, we hold consistent to our previous resolution, which we did give to the MTA over a year ago, allowing for a lot of discussion and opportunity for recognizing our concerns, and I still don't feel like they have. It also allows us to consider, continue to monitor the strategic planning process that they will be engaging in and hopefully, at the resolution of that, have the opportunity to rejoin if possible. So I'm not confident at this point that remaining within the MTA and keeping our fingers crossed that the strategic planning process will go and meet the needs that we've expressed about, about where the funding mechanisms and decisions are made are going to benefit us. So my opinion is pretty, has been pretty well assessed on that, but I'm willing to listen to other arguments on other sides. But thank you very much for this very comprehensive analysis that you've done and how persistent you've been with making sure our needs have been understood.
I think just as a final comment to that, you know, Councilmember Haroff was effectively asking in his last question to me what my confidence level was. And I think, you know, I felt pretty confident originally when I, when we started the F&amp;P process, but I was a lot less confident that we would achieve the clarity that we need out of a strategic plan after some of the comments, even though they were by single individual board members. Because in many respects, that will dictate a large part of the discussion. And philosophically, I just don't know where the other members are at, you know, only because of the final outcome of the last vote. You know, I mean, you could philosophically say, "Yeah, I agree with you, but if you vote the other way, then it doesn't place, you know, the commitment there."
I'm going to go ahead and agree with Catherine Way. So do we amend the ordinance 994?
No.
We just leave it as this?
I'd like to also just add to my comments on that, that I think that the service sets provided to the community by the CMCM is a very important service. And I would like us to revisit how we can continue to support that if we decide to withdraw from the MTA, how we can look at an arrangement in which public access television and continuing to provide government services by way of telecommunications to our community, how we can continue to support that, so.
So ultimately, the direction we have for staff tonight is to pursue all mechanisms you need to in order for us to operate those functions independently. And, you know, to meet with Barbara and figure out if, you know, the MTA board is willing to accept Larkspur as a customer. The irony of the whole thing is that it really comes down to one of the options that we had originally suggested, which is the two-tiered membership. You know, if they're amenable to that, you know, if not, then we have to go on it on our own. I would say just for the council, if you come up with an economic assessment of what that will be, it gives us several opportunities, actually, all the way up to June 17th to decide, you know, whether we revisit this or not.
Thank you.
And that would be as a point of information, but no action needs to be taken at this point.
Correct. Thank you for coming tonight, Barbara. We'll keep the dialogue going. All right, we did have one more item on the agenda. It is for an appointment of an alternate to flood zone number nine. And currently, our representative is Councilmember Hilmer. I'll let city manager Dan Schwartz report out on that particular situation and what the alternative action might be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. So as we indicated in the brief memo to you, Councilmember Hilmer has need of and requests for an alternate to attend on his behalf at the upcoming flood zone number nine advisory board. And this is one of the few positions one of you holds where we don't have an alternate. So we innocently asked the county if we could appoint an alternate. We put this on the agenda simultaneously because we wanted to meet all our deadlines. And thank you, Councilmember Hilmer, who did the legwork to find out for us. And county staff came back and said, "No, the legislative action of the Board of Supervisors to create the advisory board doesn't provide for alternate members to sit on the advisory board." So in that same response, the county staffer suggested one option available to the council would be to send one of the council members and/or some other representative to read into the record any statements that you as a councilor, Councilmember Hilmer, have. And so that's one option you might discuss this evening. I don't really know what would happen if you just decide tonight that you want to send somebody else for, Councilmember Hilmer, and he's sort of the unofficial alternate, if they'd let him, let he or she sit in the big chair or not when they show up at the meeting. But you could certainly direct, make that decision and see what happens as well. You know, the flood zone, flood zone advisory number nine is an interesting body in the sense that I've attended meetings occasionally before Councilmember Hilmer was a representative and since Councilmember Hilmer's been the representative. Sometimes it's a very casual meeting that's open to the public, but everybody's sitting around a table. And as the scrutiny has grown on the project discussions, they've become increasingly formal meetings and so now they're structured much like your own meetings. So that's sort of, I think, one of the added complications now. And it may merit petitioning the Board of Supervisors to reconsider their legislative action. If they're going to have this more formal structure, they may want to clarify that they think alternates are a good idea.
Could I just ask a question about, I understand that's what staff is telling us from the county's perspective? Have we done an independent validation of that?
I apologize, I didn't have time to pull the original legislative action out, but the city clerk told me that was actually what Jack Curley, the staffer who preceded the current staff, had also told Larkspur several years ago. So we are getting a consistent message from the county staff.
But we don't, we don't actually know to a fault that it's valid.
If I may, through the mayor, the response I got from county staff stated that the legislative action was silent on providing a proxy vote. But the circumstances of tomorrow night's meeting, if it's worth describing, there will be no vote taken. And since it's silent on the issue, I think we should direct staff to petition the Board of Supervisors to allow alternates to be designated, one. So I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion.
No city has an alternate at this point that we know of, okay.
So call the question.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And for the purposes of tomorrow night's meeting, we have two choices. We either allow one or not a majority of the council, but one or more council members, not a majority, to attend that meeting and provide comments. And I would suggest, a letter's been provided for the council tonight, drafted with the help of staff, to be signed, suggested to be signed by the mayor, representing the council's views on spending priorities for the flood control effort. And that this be provided, to be put into the record, I'll make sure it gets delivered to the county staff tomorrow and copies for the public. And then Councilmember Morrison has offered to read this letter into the record. Now, whether she does that from taking my seat at the Now where she, whether she does that from taking my seat at the, at the dais with the other advisory board members, or she does it from the audience, does not matter to me. I'll leave it to the council to decide what best reflects our interest in this. Staff recommended that they, it be read, or any statements be made from the audience.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It might be good to note for the record and for those potentially watching us at home, the letter doesn't take any positions on any specific aspect of what Flood Zone Number Nine's been proposing in terms of projects. It talks more on the philosophical level of looking at feasibility, economic viability of the projects and ensuring that the taxpayer money is used to the best benefit of the ratepayers, that's taxpayers.
For, for the benefit of our viewing audience, would it be worth someone reading the letter?
Yes, I was gonna suggest Councilmember Hilmer read it. And if council has any modifications or additions they'd like to make, we can incorporate that in.
Just before you start, before you start that, are we, are we looking at a one-time appearance? Or are you asking for a permanent alternate to be assigned tonight?
Uh, I, I think in the event any representative to a interjurisdictional agency can't make it, an alternate's helpful and that's been our practice. So just as a, as a policy issue, I think it's helpful to have the alternate designated.
And I, and I, I agree with that and I think that's appropriate. And I agree with you also, it doesn't really matter where, whoever it is, it's there tomorrow night, sits, as long as the views are expressed in a clear and articulate and recorded way.
So, so just in the manner in which we usually do alternates for, isn't that a position that the, that commissions and things the mayor chooses? Okay.
With council discussion.
All right.
Uh, this is the letter from the City of Larkspur to the Chairman of the Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board, and, which is, who's currently Tom McInerney, Mayor of San Anselmo, from Mayor Larry Chu and the Larkspur City Council. This letter should be, is to be included and read into the record of the Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board meeting April 16th, 2015, tomorrow night at San Anselmo Town Hall. Dear Chairman McInerney, the Larkspur City Council wishes to express its continued support for flood control projects and alternatives proposed for the protection of residents and properties located in the Ross Valley that are consistent with the ballot language for flood protection passed by voters, that are economically feasible and require viable entitlements, that provide maximum public flood protection benefit for minimum cost, that are in reasonable proportion to the limited financial resources of the flood fees collected, that include realistic grant funding assumptions, that provide ongoing flood protection to the fee ratepayers, residents, and property owners located in Larkspur and Greenbrier, that provide economically feasible flood protection as soon as possible, and that use the flood fees for flood protection measures, not recreational facilities. Please include this letter as part of the public record of the Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board meeting held April 16th, 2015, and provide copies to the advisory board members and the members of the public in attendance. Very truly yours, Larry Chu, Mayor for the Larkspur City Council, and council members are listed. And I'd welcome any comments or questions on the content of the letter.
I thought it was a good letter.
Yeah, me too. I was gonna say, while you give that some thought, I, I would sign it as it is unless there are other comments or additions. Okay.
Was any action required, Mr. City Manager, other than the mayor signing?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay, well, all I gotta do is sign it. Yeah, I, I think, wouldn't county need to create that alternates position before we appoint someone?
They would need to amend their legislative action to allow for us to designate an alternate and then that alternate would be appointed by the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I, I think out of deference to the county staff, we ought to at least go through that process.
And just to, to show the importance of this issue to the council, two council members have offered to attend that meeting tomorrow night. And I am pleased to hear that Councilmember Ann Morrison and Councilmember Kevin Haroff have expressed interest in attending. Councilmember Morrison has agreed to read the letter into the record. And just for the sake of showing support for the staff involved, I would defer to their suggestion that the letter be read from the audience.
I think that's right.
And I, I guess you can start the conversation with Matthew Heimel on-
About, but we'll, we'll reach out to county staff, yeah.
All right, great. All done with that item, so I had targeted 8:15 and it is now 8:07. So I'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move, second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you rather sit in the chair?